America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alt. Mr. Beistow. Mr. Carson. Mr. Fry. Mr. Polakowski. Mr. Porter. Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Kayla Whitmash.
Here.
Dylan Opelinski.
For the record, Mr. Alt, Mr. Polakowski, and Mr. Porter did indicate that they would not be present tonight. Before we do citizens' comments, it was in the paper the other day, and I don't know if you saw it, that Pat Walter Walker, who was, I guess, the former mayor of Scottsdale for a very long time, she had passed. And I was just hoping that maybe we could have a moment of silence in her memory. Thank you.
I did want to let you know that we had an executive session before on personnel matters. Citizens' comments?
Kim Kelly.
My name is Kim Kelly. I'm vice president of Southmoreland Education Association, and I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of the association. Thank you to the board for allowing the Education Association an opportunity to address you, our administration, and the community at large this evening. Often, the news about public schools and education in Southmoreland, particularly on social media, is incomplete or lacks context. In the last several weeks, it seems that folks are speculating more than ever, and inaccuracies are rampant. I would like to speak this evening on behalf of the educators. Beginning in January of this year, association officers were invited to the table to discuss budgetary concerns with the administrative staff. The primary focus for our membership was to avoid the continued loss of teaching positions while maintaining the high standards that our community has come to expect. The Education Association and the administration agreed that if realignment were to get board approval, we could improve opportunities for our students in Southmoreland as well as maintain our remaining staff, which has been drastically reduced in spite of steady enrollment. In fact, as we begin the fall of 2019, we will have lost 10 more teaching positions, mainly through attrition just since 2017-18. The teachers certainly feel the budget crunch. The goal was to create a realignment that better supported students and created equity. The Education Association began reaching out to our teachers to explain that realignment was in the works and to prepare the staff for potential changes. The message that we shared back in February and remains true today is that we appreciated the professionalism and the mutual respect that set the tone for the many hours of intense discussion and debate that we shared. There was a single unified goal between both leaderships, to preserve a maximum number of faculty positions. The administrators went about the business of filling those positions. Although the Education Association recognized the need for realignment, we were surprised by changes made that were not outlined by the administration's plan. Last week, the board unanimously voted to make curricular changes. We are grateful to the board for recognizing the necessity of these changes and ensuring that no deeper cuts to staff would result. Although there will be a period of adjustment for many of our staff, directly and indirectly impacted by the changes, the Southmoreland Education Association is extremely confident that our teachers will not only rise to the challenge, but they will exceed all expectations. The association would like to share some of the positive results that have occurred because of staff realignment and sacrifices. Also, the district did not incur any additional expenditure from these realignments. The positive results are as follows. One, restaffed the learning support department at SES following two retirements. Two, added one additional speech teacher to a department that was out of compliance with the number of students they were servicing. Three, initiated a life skills support class at the middle school to address the need for proper continuum of service. Beginning in the fall of 2019, the district will now have a designated K-12 computer class and coding curriculum. Also, in the fall of 2019, the district will have a designated K-12 STEM class and a designated health class. At the high school, we will have the ability to reopen the library with a certified teacher to provide students accessibility to that wonderful resource. Eight, the district will have a designated K-8 gifted teacher. Previously, this was an unpaid supplemental that was supported by three different teachers, who each held different full-time teaching positions. And finally, last but not least, we will have seven kindergarten classrooms to ease class size issues. It is important for the current administration, the board, and the general public to recognize that over the last 15 years, the district has reduced the number of total teachers by 31. This coupled with an increase in mandated special education services as well as elimination of contracted services has reduced the number of regular education classrooms district-wide by more than 40. This vastly exceeds the percentage reduction in student population. Furthermore, this staff reduction has impacted our students' scholastic experiences. So in conclusion, the association has sacrificed and supports the majority of the realignments. But, the Southmoreland Education Association would be very hard-pressed to find any future reductions, whether through cuts or through losses via attrition, to be reasonable or educationally sound. I thank you very much for your time this evening.
Kristy Smith.
Hi, my name's Kristy Smith, 818 Parker Avenue in Scottsdale. Better? Is that better? Okay. I have spoken to several of the administrators over this past week about the budget and some of the changes that have happened with the teachers in the past couple of days. While I don't understand a lot of the changes, and I've told Mr. Masha and several of the principals, a lot of them make no sense to me whatsoever, I do understand that because of the budget problems that we have, changes have to be made, and we need to save as many teachers' jobs as possible. I also know that we have wonderful teachers here, and they will make the best of whatever situation they are put in. However, when my child is put in the middle of these decisions and being told that their positions are changing, that's when I have a problem. When my children come home from school and say, "My teachers were crying all day today because they're moving positions and they don't want to," that's when I have a problem. Children obviously should not be put in the center of these adult decisions and adult discussions. I have spoken very openly about this. It's nothing new. I don't think that telling teachers at the beginning of the day with their classrooms waiting for them is in the best interest of the students. I don't think that it can ever be... While you can expect someone to be able to turn off emotions, you can only account for your own reactions to things. I can only tell you what I'm going to do. So in telling someone news, you can't know how they're going to react to it. You can know that if you tell them at the end of the day the chances that the students are going to be affected are a lot less. So that is one of my issues. I think that we are... In some of the decisions we're making, because they're hard, we're often forgetting about the students that are being affected as well. And this has been going on for days. I think that we need to move forward as a district, and I'm asking for openness and honesty. I've heard a lot of good things over the past couple of days in talking with the principals and Mr. Masha and Mr. Marnell. And I think that if everyone had a better feeling of the good things... Sometimes they're masked by trying to be politically correct or trying to spin it in a certain way. I think that everyone here, myself included, just appreciates openness and honesty, even if it's hard. Even if you're saying, "Yes, we don't agree with some of these decisions we had to make, but we're trying to keep teachers' jobs." If you were to say that to us, I think a lot of people would really understand and take it a lot better. If you would say, "Our budget stinks." I mean, we had Mr. Marnell say one thing one week, and the next week, Mr. Petonic spun it in a different light. It was very confusing to a lot of people. So I think if tonight someone could say, "This is actually what we're thinking and what we were working towards," it would make a big difference. Thank you.
Michelle Williams.
Michelle Williams, 208 North Chestnut Street. I have some questions about this amendment to the business manager's contract. Although I appreciate that obviously we're admitting that it was inappropriate, I'm not really sure what we have to gain by this piece of paper. I mean, clearly, he's not going to get another $2,500 incentive in this district because we're going to be raising taxes. But I'm a little confused with number one. So I don't know if Mr. Petonic can elaborate on that or not. But we're deleting from the schedule just the provision for the $2,500 incentive increase in salary in fiscal years 18, 19, 19, 20, 20, 21. That we cannot delete, obviously, the $2,500 he's already received and added to the salary. So was he paid pension on these incentives? That's a question I have. I'm looking at your... this new one. Yeah, so it says in here, "This amendment shall not delete the $2,500 incentive permanently added to the salary in fiscal year 17, 18." So did we pay pension on that? So I was told by people who worked on this, that that... on this one, the original one, that that isn't how that worked. So I'm looking at 2021. What happens now in 2021? His salary's going to stay at 104?
It's stated here. I'm not sure if you're looking at this page.
It's stated where? On the second page?
I handed out and put on the bench some...
Are they different than what was on mine?
They are different than what was posted because what was posted, I decided, was not as clear as it should be. So I took the necessary language and specifically stated what the salary would be for 2018, 2019...
Oh, wait a minute. I don't think this is correct.
And 2019, 2020, and 2020, 21.
Time out, time out. Let's back this up. These $2,500 incentives were not to increase his salary, I don't believe. They were supposed to be a one-time deal. Are you telling me that the $2,500 got added to and added to and added to and added to? Is that what you're telling me?
I'm saying that if there was an increment, that it had to... You had to really study that table, but the effect of it was to make it a part of the salary. So there's an addition of $1, $2,500 to the salary for that reason. And what was confusing was there was also, for the beginning years, a $2,500 annual raise.
So bottom line, at the end of this contract, he's going to be making $109,000 versus $104,000. Is that correct?
Right, and not $114,000, which was projected as a possibility.
Kudos to this board who voted for this nonsense. And again, this does nothing to protect Southmoreland School District. So tonight, when you all are voting on the budget, please remember that we cannot go over budget. We need to not take any money from our general fund, whatever that means, and this is crap.
Well, you admitted that item two completely removes the possibility of utilizing or misconstruing and using...
Oh, for his raises? It doesn't... That kind of doesn't matter either, Mr. Petonic, because nothing in this contract links a raise to his evaluations. Ever, nothing. Any other business manager in Westmoreland County write in their contract links.
That is why the board decided to establish, or might decide to establish tonight, if they approve this, specific salaries rather than having that as a continuing ambiguity or concern for the school board...
When he is gone in 2021, please rip this up. Don't ever copy and paste from this contract because it did not protect this district.
I can assure you, I did not copy and paste...
Oh, I don't think you copied and pasted anything. We'll be clear on that. I don't think you did it. So the next time, don't use this.
Anissa Stafford.
Good evening. My name's Anissa Stafford. I have two children in the district. I'm concerned about the change at the middle school regarding reading. It's my understanding that reading will now be taught with the LA. Is that correct? Okay. So I am a teacher. I've taught for over 20 years. I've taught sixth grade. I've taught sixth grade reading, language, and writing. I don't understand how you are going to effectively teach those subjects in one period, even if it is an extended period. This is a PSSA... These are PSSA subjects. I'm really afraid that our scores are going to go down by doing this. I don't know if you understand... In education, a lot we talk about children who are the bubble. So those aren't the kids at the top. Those aren't the kids at the bottom. Those are the kids in between. And they can go either way. And by cutting their instructional time, I'm really afraid that those scores are going to drop. And more importantly to me as an educator, that they're not going to have the reading skills that they need. And that's so important. It's so important. And I'm also afraid that when those scores do drop, because I do believe they will, fingers are going to point at the teachers. And it's not the teachers' fault. Please remember that. Now, these were cuts that were made by the board and by administration, not by the teachers. And I'm afraid they're the ones that are going to have fingers pointed at them. Second, I'm concerned about the loss of the computer. And I know that it's being replaced with coding. And I was also told some woodcutting, which I don't even know why woodcutting is still in the middle school. It should have been gone with Home Ec. Frankly, Home Ec would have been a better replacement than woodcutting. I'm digressing, though. Do any of you know what coding actually is? Because the IU class that your teachers were sent to sells it as, "Learn to make your own game, app, or computer drawing." Now, is that really what our students should be learning in computer? Where's Google? Everything is Google right now in education. I teach first grade. I have my kids in Google Classroom, Google Docs, almost every day. They should be learning how to write a document in Google Docs, a slideshow for a presentation in Google Slides, organizing projects in the Google Drive, Google Sheets, Google Classroom. Google is what is on the Chromebooks. And where are the Chromebooks? Why aren't they using them? I don't understand. I have a middle schooler, and she says very, very few times do they actually get to use them. Connelsville, which we know in Fayette County, much poorer school district, we have had a one-to-one initiative with Chromebooks for two years now, from kindergarten to 12th grade. And it's grants. It's grants. This doesn't need to come out of your budget. These are grants that you guys should be finding. I don't understand. I don't... I feel like my children are losing out on so much as I watch my first graders on their Chromebooks every day. That's just something to think about. I'm just afraid that students are going to leave Southmoreland with very little computer education. And how are they going to make it in college or in any other job that requires basic computer skills? So thank you for your time.
Minutes. Approval of minutes?
Board hereby approves the minutes for the April 11, 2019 discussion meeting and the April 24, 2019 voting meeting.
Motion? Mrs. Rhodes, second. Mrs. Smith. Roll call? Or voice vote? All in favor? Opposed? Nice habit. Accounts. April 2019 Treasurers Report.
The board hereby approves the April 2019 Treasurers Report.
Motion? Mr. Carson, second. Mr. Beistow. Roll call.
Mr. Beistow?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries six, three, absent.
Board reports. Student report?
I'd like to know that Dylan had a prior obligation this evening. Congratulations to May's CWCTC Scotty Scolar Award winners, Alicia Bennett and Elizabeth King. CWCTC senior recognition ceremony was held on May 13, 7:00 p.m. at WCCC. Senior Class Day will be held on June 4, starting at 7:45 a.m. in the high school auditorium. Commencement rehearsal and ticket distribution will be June 5 in the high school auditorium. June 7, commencement will be held in the high school auditorium at 7:00 p.m. June 12 will be Kenny Wood Picnic Day. May 29, Scholars Banquet, 6:30 p.m. in the high school cafeteria. On Friday and Saturday, April 26 and 27, 22 students, among with Mr. Sherrick and Mr. Pollard, made the annual trip to California University of Pennsylvania for the 14th Annual BOTS IQ Final Competitions. Southmoreland's Team Anthrax kicked off Friday by winning the first battle of the day against Admiral Perry AVTS, but was slaughtered thereafter against the soon-to-be grand champion Bedford High School. Team Fury lost their opening battle against Penn Trafford, however made it to the fifth round of the losers' bracket with wins against WACC, Elizabeth Forward, Admiral Perry Team Two, and Plum, to be eliminated by Charteriers Houston. Congratulations to sophomore Madison Basinker for superb driving skills during each match. Southmoreland still improved in the final rankings this year as well. Anthrax tied for fourth in the documentarian binder with a score of 373 out of 430 points. Finished 61st out of 80 total teams in competitive rankings for a final ranking score of 26th out of 80. Fury's documentation finished 6th, 22 out of 80 in the competitive rankings and achieved a final ranking of 8th place out of 80 teams, a new Southmoreland best. We thank the continued support of our district and the industry sponsors Penn State Tool &amp; Dive, Reynolds Machine, KAF Tech Industries, and Tech Med Chemical Milling. Mrs. Goodman and her high school art students would like to extend an invitation to everyone to attend this year's student art exhibition. The event will be held on Tuesday, May 28, from 5 to 7:00 p.m. in the high school. This is the second year for the event, and it will showcase a wide range of student artwork, both two-dimensional and three-dimensional. In addition, other electives will be showcasing their students' work as well as providing interactive activities for attendees. The event is free to the public. We hope to see you there. Senior Kaylee Flack is working on illustrating a children's book written by Southmoreland graduate Abby Crowe. It is a book that helps children relate and understand relatives with Alzheimer's disease. Her illustrations are done in watercolor and will be completed by the end of the school year. Junior Alyssa Johnson took third place award at the GLSD Art Competition for her mixed media piece. The theme for the competition was Spirit Animal Self-Portrait. There were over 30 students from a number of surrounding districts that participated. Art Council students were proud to be asked to paint the mural at the middle school in the space currently used for Rachel's Closet Project. It was a two-day mural project, including inspirational quotes and images as well as a portrait of Rachel. Art Council students attended a field trip to the Mattress Factory Installation Museum in Pittsburgh in March. Students were exposed to a wide range of art forms and installation art that they don't get to experience here in school. Art, computer, graphics, and music students helped with the Night of the Arts at the elementary school on May 9. Students painted faces, completed a Starry Night Paper Mosaic mural with the kids, and also provided a Monet Water Lily painting project. The computer students had a green screen display, virtual reality glasses, and remote-controlled cars that are programmed using the Arduino. Graphic students created custom bags for the Night of the Arts with a choice of three themes. Southmoreland Pride, Think Spring, and Be Kind bags were designed by SES students and created by SHS graphic students. Art students worked on pieces for the prom set and helped set the design arrangement on the stage. The computer science students helped class officers with the prom program, and Chad Giamp Francesco programmed the lights for the fountain for the grand march setup. Senior Tony Brao is the recipient for the 2019 Westmoreland Cultural Trust Award. The award ceremony was May 15 at the Palisader in Greensburg. Senior portfolio students are currently working on the commencement and Scholars Banquet cover designs for this year's commencement ceremony. The computer science students designed and created the commencement tickets, scholars' invitation, and the commencement program. Student scheduling is in the process for the 2019-2020 school year. Counselors met with the current 8th to 11th grade students. Counselors are meeting with the students, teachers, and parents to solidify future plans of the students to ensure classes they are planning to take meet their career plans. Counselors are working with the students and their families regarding classes the student is currently failing and reviewing credit recovery options. The impact of failing specific core classes can jeopardize graduation and career plans. AP exams are in progress, wrapping up Week 1 on May 10, 2019. Seven exams were proctored this week. There will be seven exams proctored Week 2, beginning May 13. A total of 132 students will take 218 exams. Keystone exams begin the week of May 13, 2019. Three exams are given: literature, Algebra I, and biology. Student verification for graduation is confirmed by the counselors that all graduates have fulfilled graduation requirements in order to receive their diploma. Scholarship opportunities are announced and shared with students as they are received. The months of April and May are extremely busy assisting students with the application process. The counseling department continually seeks out new scholarship opportunities for our students. Scholarships are posted on Google Classroom. Each graduating class has their own Google Classroom setup to share information. Southmoreland High School counseling website as well as posted on the wall outside of the counseling office and in the cafeteria. Class Day for the class of 2019 is set for Tuesday, June 4, 2019. Counseling staff are working with presenters, including local businesses, colleges, et cetera, to include them in our celebration of our students' success. Students receiving scholarships will be awarded those scholarships that day. Military inductees will also be honored. Continuing to work on career readiness activities with students to meet the PA Future Career Readiness Index requirements. As always, the counseling staff continues to work with students, parents, guardians, and staff to meet the academic, social, emotional, and career needs for our high school students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is posted in Board Docs, but I wanted to read something that Mrs. Gore and Mrs. Amberini sent to not only the district but also to the community. "Your kindness and generosity help to provide a meaningful, life-changing experience for the students of the Music Theater Department at Southmoreland. Nearly 80 students, just under 20% of the school population, were involved as members of the cast, crew, and production staff for The Little Mermaid. Nearly 2,700 audience members experienced the hard work of our cast and crew firsthand as they filled the Southmoreland Auditorium from March 28th through the 31st, 2019. Please note that you played an integral role in our ability to bring this production to life. For many of our students, this group has become a family and offered them cherished experiences and memories. Your care and support are inspiring and provide an example or philanthropic to our students that we hope they will continue in their own futures. On behalf of our cast, crew, staff, and boosters, we hope you will accept our sincerest thanks for your support. With appreciation, Southmoreland High School Music Department 2019, cast and crew of The Little Mermaid." And I want to stress that it was a wonderful production. And I also want to compliment Kaylee on her presentation. And there are a lot of wonderful things going on with the students at our high school, and I'm sure we're all very proud of what is going on at the high school, especially with the students. So, thank you. I also posted underneath my report, and I'm not going to read it all. It would take quite a while. There is a Southmoreland School District Special Education Summary of the services that we provide. I have also provided a summary of our 2019 Pittsburgh Business Time School Rankings. I only have one copy of it right now. If anyone is interested in looking at it at the end of the meeting, I will gladly set it out. I just asked it, if you do look at it, please don't take it, because this is the only copy I do have. But in summary, the honor roll rankings for local school districts, and this would be the region, so it would be multiple counties. Southmoreland High School, oh, I'm sorry. Southmoreland was ranked 29th of 105 districts, 6th in Westmoreland County. The Keystone Exam High School Rankings, Southmoreland was ranked 36th of 109 high schools, 7th in Westmoreland County. The top 25 local school districts by Grade 8. Southmoreland Middle School, 8th grade, was ranked 20th, 3rd in Westmoreland County. Top 25 local school districts by Grade 6. Southmoreland Middle School, 6th grade, was ranked 19th, 3rd in Westmoreland County. And there is something in the Pittsburgh Time called the Overachiever Award. And basically what it is, rankings are based on standardized test scores and a percent of students defined by the state as economically disadvantaged. In the entire region, Southmoreland was recognized as 3rd. So, I'm very proud of what is taking place in our schools. I have also, when you came in on the table, I had set out a page of proposed budget changes. If you didn't get one, Mr. Kiefer, are they still there on the table? Okay, if you didn't get one, there are some there. I just want to briefly go through this. I also want to state, last week, and excuse me for bringing this to light, Mr. Petonik. I do believe Mr. Petonik's presentation might have scared a lot of people. Might have been a pretty somber and frightening presentation. The intent was not to frighten anyone. It was just to paint a realistic picture of the possible situations this district could find itself in if we are not fiscally responsible. I apologize that if it did frighten a lot of people. Looking at the proposed budget changes, I'm going to very briefly go through it. I tried to put myself, and I've always asked myself, if you were, if someone was telling you something, what would be the best way you would want it to be told to you, Vince? And I came to the conclusion that probably straightforward and as simple as possible is the best way of doing that. So, I tried to summarize this, and working with Mr. Mornell, we spent a lot of time this week together with Mr. Clara and Mr. Crofcek. And we're putting some proposed budget changes, some of which I also have to thank Mr. Porter, because they are the direct product of Mr. Porter. Actually, numbers 1 through 12 on that sheet were pulled directly from a presentation that Mr. Porter had given to the board. Number 13, we are proposing that we remove team leaders' supplementals. They are $16,000 and $2,500 apiece, and any associated benefit with that. We are looking at terminating the middle school reading program. Terminate the W.I. contract for speech services. And once again, the speech services, we are not terminating speech services. We are bringing those back into our own schools with the hiring of an additional support staff. Eliminate subestimates. Reduce estimates for printing services. Removal of the concession stand supplemental position. Increase estimates in various local revenue accounts. Increase budgetary estimates for outside legal counseling fees. That, if you notice, and once again, I had to think about how this was presented. We started with a negative number. Any of those proposed budget changes are positive values. So, you take a negative and you add the positive value, and that will decrease the negative value. So, if you see reinstate, I'm sorry, increased budgetary estimates for outside legal counsel, that is a negative value. That will increase the negative value. And the reason why it was believed that we should increase that is that we will be having contract negotiations with two of our unions, the S.E.A. and the S.E.I.U. And we just want to make sure that we have the ability to be able to use outside legal counsel if possible. I'm also proposing that we reinstate ACHIEVE 3,000, which is a reading intervention program at the middle school, for $12,425. And I'm also proposing that we reinstate DIBBLES diagnostic testing. And DIBBLES is basically, by design, is a quick and efficient way to administer or determine a student's needs for intervention. So, I really do believe that is an important part of our ability to be able to diagnose students' skill deficits at the early level. And I am proposing that we reinstate that. And I know that it was a big point of discussion about reducing all four daily source for teacher building subs. I'm trying, I would like to propose that we eliminate only two of those, keeping one at the Scottsdale campus, which would be the middle school and the elementary, and one at the Albertton campus, even though it's not a campus per se. It's two separate entities at S.P.C. and at the high school. So, I'm trying to come to common grounds. Obviously, our intent, we have brought the negative $703,933 down to negative $64,396. That is a continual work in progress. I do understand the community and those people that are addressing the board about their concerns with the budget. It is obviously, I'm hoping, I'm going to speak for everyone. It is our intent that we have a balanced budget this year. Because if we are able to have a balanced budget this year, and we are not able to draw from our fund balance for this current year, that will stop the cycle. And Mr. Petonik, please correct me if I'm wrong. But if we don't borrow from the fund balance this year, and we are able to have a balanced budget next year and not draw from fund balance, we basically stopped that process of, that you explained last week. Would that be a correct assumption?
On that particular criteria, yes.
Yes. So, it is our intent to continue working towards balancing this budget. I know that on the 20th, Mr. Polatowski and Mr. Porter had volunteered to sit down with the administration and further delve into the possibilities of where we can trim some additional monies. And our goal is to present balanced budgets. So, thank you very much.
Solicitor information? I'm sorry, business manager report?
Mr. Mashia stole all the thunder.
Oh, I apologize.
But I also want to add that we spent considerable time with Mr. Petonik yesterday, too, going over all these changes and discussing them. And, you know, working together as a team. So, I appreciate Mr. Petonik's efforts, as well as Bill and Mr. Mashia and our two principals there. It's been a real good working discovery the past week. And, right, our intent is to balance this budget. And I think we are almost there, so very, very confident that we can do that. Thank you.
Solicitor information?
I have a resolution that I would ask you to deal with tonight. I don't know if you want to deal with it now or later in the program, but I handed it out, and it's to correct amendment. The resolution was passed last week because of the omission of the word temporary in Item 3 on Page 2. And to correct notice of intent to suspend, to notice of intent not to renew. Do you want to handle that, Mr. Mashia, later, or do you want me to?
If you're bringing it up now.
If you're bringing it up now, it's a reservation. So, this was the curtailment or alteration of the educational program of the Southmoreland School District, Middle School Reading amended, May 16, 2019. And the first page is the same as what was utilized last week. Attached to it at the end is, again, your report that you gave last week. And Items 1 and 2 are unchanged. Items 3A and B are unchanged. And Item C, in italics, shows the change of words to correctly align with what you did in 1 and 2 above, because of the omission of the word temporary. And then, the next page is the same. So, in order to just have a solid record for that, I'm requesting that Mr. Mashia call for approval of the resolution to amend, to include those changes that are set forth in here, and to ask the school board to approve that.
I would ask the board to approve the amendment to curtailment or alteration of the educational program of the Southmoreland School District, Middle School Reading amended, May 16th, 2019.
Do we need to read the?
Yes.
Do we need to read this part?
If you want to be perfectly clear, you could read C, read the best word, changes.
Okay, 3C. "Determine the appropriate temporary professional employees whose contracts are not to be renewed and who will be terminated effective as of the above stated date and provide a notice of and have termination hearings before the superintendent. And thereafter, if found eligible to not renew and eligible to terminate the temporary professional contract of a temporary professional employee, cause to be prepared the notice of intent to not renew the contract as a temporary professional employee for another year and terminate the employment of the temporary professional employee to be signed by the school board president and secretary, unless temporary professional employee timely requests a hearing before the school board." And just to be, there's an "and" there, so I will include that.
Have a motion? Mrs. Rhodes, second. Mrs. Smith, roll call, please.
Ask for any public comment.
Oh, public comment? Roll call, please.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries 6, 3, absent.
Yes. W.I.U. report?
I have a report, so you can read it next week.
Okay. C.W.C.T.C. report, oh, Jason's one here. P.S.B.A. Liaison Report.
Charter school bills were approved by the House Education Committee on Monday. The bills dealt with a range of issues regarding charter school administration and expansion. Kurt Soni, or Soni, the Education Majority Committee Chairman, hopes to find a bipartisan approach to updating the 1997 state charter school law. Two of the House bills, 356 and 357, were opposed by the P.S.B.A. 356 would give charter schools a first right of refusal for the purchase or lease of unused school district buildings and require districts to give cyber schools reasonable access to their facilities for them to give standardized testing. And House Bill 357 would require that the State Department of Education create a uniform process for a charter school application in a uniform charter amendment process. House Bill 355, which was sponsored by Mike Reese, speaks to create new ethics requirements for charter school trustees and administrators. And House Bill 358 would allow charter school students to be duly enrolled in concurrent college classes through a higher education institution. That concludes that part of it. However, I did pass out a report that I found that was quite interesting, going back to the cyber school issues. I'm not going to read it all. I'm just going to give a few points here that were highlighted. Pennsylvania cyber schools overbuild public school districts $200 million a year. Also, they recently introduced legislation that we create a commission to examine the way charter schools are funded in Pennsylvania. As we know from before, my other reports, measures to force parents to pay if they choose to enroll their students in outside cyber schools if their local district offers online classes has been introduced in both the House and the Senate. Let's see here. Like I said, I'm not going to read it all, but it's a good article. "School leaders say that when traditional public schools offer online classes, the cost is about one-third of what they're often billed in tuition costs by the state cyber schools." "The school districts pay cyber charter schools more than $463 million. The average total cyber charter school with tuition payment made by a district was $926,000." We're talking about large amounts of dollars, which are overpayments coming out of already constrained budgets. So, it just kind of highlights a few of those things. So, when you get a chance, read over that. It's a good article, and we have to keep up that fight. They need to start doing something to help us, since our district, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Vince, we spend $1.2 million on cyber school. So, I think that's something that we definitely need to continue to look at. So, that concludes my report.
Mr. Petonik, since it's after the fact, can I post this under the P.S.B.A. Liaison? This is the document that Mrs. Rhodes had referred to. I just, I think it would be great for public information if they were to see this.
Oh, sure.
So, I will scan this and post it under the P.S.B.A. Liaison Report on this issue of Board Docs. It is interesting reading. You might want to take advantage of reading that.
Anti-Bullying Committee Report?
I don't have anything to report.
School Safety Committee Report?
No report tonight. I'll have to give Mr. Kiefer for the next one.
Okay, thank you. No old business, new business, budget adjustments?
The Board has asked to approve the proposed budget adjustments.
Have a motion on that? Mrs. Rhodes, second. Mr. Beistel? Mr. Fry? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries 6, 3.
Cooperative Agreement Dual Enrollment?
The Board hereby approves the cooperative agreement for dual enrollment with Mount Aloisus College for the 2019-2020 school year. And I would encourage any family out there to engage their child in any type of dual enrollment programs. Just to give you an idea, the cost of a credit through this program is $55. If you were to go to any other university or college, it would be considerably higher. So, I don't know, Kaylee, I don't want to put you on the spot, but are you participating or taking advantage of any of these that you might be able to?
I'm currently in A.D. Literature, and Mrs. Amy Brown takes it, teaches it, and I really do enjoy the class, and I am glad that I'm getting credits for it.
It is a wonderful program, and it really has beneficial factors for our students and their families. I'm sorry, I diverged.
Can I have a motion? Mr. Fry, second. Mrs. Smith, roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries 6, 3 absent.
Personnel. Resignation of choreographer for Southmoreland.
The board hereby accepts the resignation of Charles Nathan Lowery as the choreographer for Southmoreland School District.
Motion?
So with regrets, with his tenure, about 18 years and all this?
No, this is a...
Oh.
Mr. Beistel, second. Mrs. Rhodes. Roll call.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries 6, 3 absent.
Resignation from supplemental position of TV video coordinator.
The board hereby accepts, hopefully with regrets, the resignation of Chris Pollard as TV video coordinator at the completion of the 2018-2019 school year, and the board authorizes the administration to post the supplemental position. Thank you, Mr. Pollard.
We can say, all say no, right?
We could, but I don't know if Mr. Pollard would appreciate that.
Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Carson, second. Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes, with regrets.
Motion carries 6, 3.
Mr. Pollard, what are you going to do with your Thursday nights?
(laughing).
I've got some naming up to do.
Resignation from supplemental position of stage director.
Once again, with regrets, the board hereby accepts the resignation of Chris Pollard as stage director at the completion of the 2018-2019 school year, and authorizes the administration to post the supplemental position.
Motion, please. Mr. Carson, second. Mrs. Rhodes. Roll call.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes, with regrets.
Motion carries 6, 3 absent.
Middle school, head middle school football coach.
The board hereby approves Adam McKeon as the recommended candidate for the position of head middle school football coach. All clearances are up to date.
Motion, please. Mr. Fry, second. Mrs. Smith. Roll call.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries 5 yes, 1 no, 3 absent.
Custodial position?
The board is hereby asked to consider the hiring of Seth King as an eight-hour custodian for a floater position. This is on a recommendation by Mr. Mizwall, and I would like to stress that this is not a new position. This position has been posted twice and has not been taken advantage of by anyone or requested by anyone. In that position would not be able to start until after June 7.
Motion? Mr. Beistel, second. Mrs. Smith. Roll call.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries 6, 3 absent.
Amendment to business manager's contract.
The board hereby approves the adjustments to the business manager's contract effective immediately. And please bear with me. Be resolved that the school board authorizes entering into the agreement to amend business manager agreement with Southmoreland School District 2016-2017 through 2020-2021 in the form attached heretofore, providing for clarification of certain matters relating to salary and eliminating language which does not or may give the appearance of the possibility of future bonuses, incentives, or performance-based changes to salary, beginning with fiscal year 2018-2019.
Motion? Nope, I'm sorry.
For clarification, that's the written version, not the one that's posted on Board Doc.
And I'm going to read that, right? Please, once again, bear with me. The parties to this agreement are: James V. Marnell, the current business manager of Southmoreland School District, hereafter business manager, under a contract titled Business Manager's Agreement with Southmoreland School District 2016-2017 through 2020-2021, hereafter the contract, and Southmoreland School District, hereafter Southmoreland, who is the employer of the business manager under the said contract. Whereas, the parties have met and discussed and considered the provisions set forth herein and agree that they are in mutual interest of the parties, the parties hereby agree as follows. Number 1. The contract is incorporated by reference and is amended by: A) Deleting from the schedule attached to the last page of the contract the provision for $2,500 incentive increase in salary in fiscal years 2018 through 2019, 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021, as stated therein. B) Deleting the calculation in column D, E, and F; and C) Removing any ongoing applicability of the nine lines at the bottom of the page to those years and substituting total fixed salaries as follows. Column D, 2018-2019, $104,000. Column E, 2019-2020, $106,500. And column F, '20-20 through '2021, $109,000. This amendment shall not delete the $2,500 incentive permanently added to the salary in fiscal year 2017-2018. Number 2. The contract is amended by: A) Deleting from Article XB2, the semicolon and the word "and," and inserting as punctuation a period; and B) Deleting in its entirety Article XB3, which states to establish the basis for possible incremental adjustments in the annual rate for the business manager. Number 3. All of the remaining terms of the original agreement shall remain in full force and effect. Number 4. It is the intent of this agreement to eliminate language which does or may give the appearance of the possibility of future bonuses, incentives, or performance-based changes to salary beginning with fiscal year 2018-2019. Number 5. This agreement and the original contract as amended herein incorporates all of the terms of the total contract between the parties, and there are no representations, inducements, or understandings other than as set forth in them. The contract may only be further amended by mutual agreement of the parties in the signed writing and approved by the school board of Southmoreland. Number 6. The parties do hereby stipulate that there is adequate contractual consideration for entering into this agreement without additional benefit or additional detriment to either party. Number 7. This agreement shall become immediately effective upon the approval of the Board of School Directors of Southmoreland in its mutual execution, which shall occur forthwith. In witness thereof, the parties do hereby execute this agreement with the intent to be legally bound by their signatures.
Mrs. Rhodes, second. Mr. Beistel? Roll call.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries 6, 3 absent.
Citizens' comments?
I live at 208 North Chestnut Street in Scottsdale. Former graduate from here. Want to congratulate you all tonight. You just gave a man a pay raise who got a bonus in a year that we didn't raise taxes, yet we took $2 million from the fund balance. Congratulations. The money that's on that paper that you put out, the totals, are more than what his salary would have been under the previous amendment. Congratulations. Job well done.
This is actually concerning what Mrs. Rhodes was talking about. I was speaking to Representative Warner's office... Sorry. I was speaking to Representative Warner's office about this Senate Bill 34. And they suggested that the board as a whole can vote to approve a resolution, and they can send that to Harrisburg, and it would be a resolution saying that you're in support of the Senate Bill 34. And there are two different bills right now. One stipulates how a cyber charter school could be funded, and one stipulates if a school district has its own cyber charter school, and a student decides to go to one that's outside of that, the school district does not have to pay for it. But they are strongly suggesting that parents, that school boards, that teachers write to Harrisburg in support of this because it could drastically change some of our funding, I know. And the resolution that they put forth was, as a school board, a resolution petitioning the Pennsylvania General Assembly to take immediate action to correct the tuition expenses paid for regular and special education students to cyber charter schools so that it is based on the actual cost of education of their students and relieves the financial burden on school district and local taxpayers. So I would ask that for the next meeting, maybe you look at maybe approving a resolution to send to Harrisburg just so that we can show our representatives that we are in support of this. Thank you.
Not that I want to beat a dead horse here, but I guess I just want some clarification. I want everybody in this room to hear this. A bonus will not be paid in any year where the unassigned fund balance drops below $2 million. A bonus. So this $2,500 that got added to his salary was a bonus that wasn't supposed to be a salary. Whoever reinterpreted this to vote on tonight is interpreting it in a way that it was not meant to be. I know that, Mr. Potonic, you didn't write this paper. This wasn't your work. This was something that was put together by the committee, and Mrs. Love was part of that committee. And unfortunately, I think you're the only poor soul here tonight. But we listened to Mr. Alt explain this in great detail last Thursday night after the meeting. And he reiterated to a number of people out there that this was a $2,500 bonus that was only paid one time, and that he never got it again. How did this get added to salary? It's not. It says salary and incentive, salary and incentive, salary and incentive, and so on, to the last year of his contract where he should be making $104,000 plus the highest year of his incentive, which could have been anywhere from $104,000 to $114,000. So basically, what you're in essence saying is that had we been a wealthy district and he went merry on his way and got $2,500, $5,000, $7,500, and $10,000, you're saying in the last year of his contract, he would have been making $124,000. You're not interpreting this correctly. I mean, I don't... Because literally, if he did that, if he did $2,500, then $5,000, then $7,500, then $10,000, his year-end could have had the potential to be $124,000. And that's not what this paper says. You haven't interpreted correctly. I mean, I don't... I mean, it's a shame. It's a shame. He's getting $5,000 a year raises, basically, throughout the duration of this contract. I don't think anybody else in this district is getting that. You have interpreted this incorrectly. I wish we would have waited for Mr. Alt to be here because maybe he could have explained it. This is not what that says. It's literally not.
Mary Farquhar.
Yes, you may. I mean, please do.
I was asking if I could... If you go to the table and you look at line 6, it says incentive.
Yes.
In column B, for the first year, it's $2,500.
Yes.
If you go to column C, assuming that it applied that year also, the aggregate would then be $5,000. If you go to column D, it says $7,500. And column E says $10,000. Now, when you go to column F, and you look underneath the line that says $104,000, it says highest incentive of previous four years. If it had happened each and every year, the highest incentive would have been column E, $10,000, and it would have been added to the 104 to equal 114. If you look at the line that says total, it shows a range of 104,000 to 114. So the maximum was 114.
Okay, so let's go back to column E. Line 9. In line E, the total potential is $114,000. So you're saying that he wouldn't get any raise in the following year, then? Because if his total potential in E is $114,000, and his maximum potential in F is $114,000, that equals no raise in year 2021.
Where it says total, 114, it says underneath it salary and incentive.
Correct. But... Okay, so that's the total. That is the total he would receive in 1920, if he got to that maximum amount. But what I'm saying is if he gets to the maximum amount of 114 in column E, what happens in column F? Because 114 would not be the total. He would be entitled to some type of incentive, I'm assuming $10,000. See, you're interpreting this as each year is $2,500, and I don't think that's how it was meant to be interpreted. How it was meant to be interpreted is these were climbing incentives. So if in column B, you received a $2,500 incentive, in column C, you did not raise taxes again, his incentive was $5,000. If he went three years and didn't raise it, it would be $7,500. And why I say that is if you come down here into this gibberish of A through F in lines 20 through 24, it says that in a year where no tax increase, so... And succeeding years of no tax increase, an additional $2,500 for each successive year. In the year 2021, there will be no incentive paid regardless of any tax increase, just an increase based on the highest incentive paid in any of the four... The previous four years. It also says if there is a year that intervenes with a tax increase, the following year will pay a $2,500 incentive. And succeeding years of no taxes increase, an additional $2,500. I don't think you interpreted this janky piece of paper correctly. I mean, that's where we're at.
Are you saying that it could have been higher?
Oh, yes. It could have been much higher. What I'm saying to you is if you take column E and add a $10,000 bonus to that, this... See, this is how you have to do this. So he was entitled to $96,500 in 1617. The $2,500 incentive took his salary and incentive to $99,000. So going up to the next year, his salary would have been $96,500. His increase to salary was $2,500 for a total of $99,000. $5,000 if no tax increase for two years. That would have been salary and incentive of $104,000. I just think that we voted upon something that wasn't very clear and isn't being interpreted correctly. There's a lot on this piece of paper that makes absolutely zero sense, but I'm telling you, I'm right. If you take that $114,000, that he technically could... I, if you take that $114,000 that he technically could have had in column E and carry it over to column F, that doesn't add up. I think you need to revisit this piece of paper.
Well, well, the point of this is, so that doesn't happen.
No, okay, I understand what your point is, but my point is, he's now making $2,500 more a year than what he is supposed to be making. That's the bottom line of what I'm saying to you. That was an incentive. If anybody, I mean, it's very difficult because you don't work in, you know, this isn't the private sector, but if you get a bonus, that's a one-time deal. That's not a, you know, you, you, Jim, you work somewhere that you get bonuses? That's not part of your salary.
There would have been no reason then to continue to aggregate it.
Correct, correct. So, we just, so we basically just did something that we don't need, didn't need to do.
But this did aggregate it, and now we're preventing that from happening any further.
But you've also given him a raise that was not part of his salary. That's not what was negotiated.
We disagree on that point.
Any other citizens' comments? Motion to adjourn? Mrs. Rhodes, second. Mrs. Smith, all in favor, say aye. Opposed?